At the Clean Bedroom, we're crazy passionate about you not sleeping on chemicals. All our mattresses are made with materials that come from nature, not a chemical factory, and we have the certifications to prove it. Sleep healthy, sleep better, stay well. Located at 604 Santa Monica Boulevard.
Good evening, candidates. The evening will be split into four main rounds plus three lightning round sections. For the first round of questions, candidates have been split up into five groups. As I go through these groups, feel free to just wave your hand. The first group will be directed to the planning commissioners, which we have Sue Himmrich, Richard McKinnon, Jennifer Kennedy. The next group, we have current city officials. We have Mayor Pam O'Connor. We have Councilman Kevin McKeown, and we have Parks and Recreation Commissioner Phil Brock. The next group, we're going to have former city officials. We have Frank Gruber, a former planning commissioner, and Michael Feinstein, a former councilman and mayor. The next group will be political newcomers. We have Zoe Muntner, Whitney Baines Scott, and Nick Bowles. And then we also have the political, I guess we'd call them, old comers. We have Jerry Rubin, John Mann, and Terrence Leiter. For rounds two through four, names of candidates will be randomly selected to determine the order on which question they will answer. For these rounds, candidates will have the opportunity to answer one question that was not directed to them. For candidates to do this, they simply just have to hold up the mirrors that we have situated around the chairs. So once the question's been answered by all candidates who have answered that question, you can jump in and also answer that question. For the main rounds, questions must be answered in one minute or less. Carl will give a 30-second and a 10-second warning, so keep an eye on him. Once time is up, Carl will ring a bell, so please finish your sentence. Please don't be the candidate that needs to be dinged more than once. Any questions? All right, let's jump straight into it. This first question is directed to the three planning commissioners. In the order which was randomly selected beforehand, we're going to go Sue, Richard, and then Jennifer. Remember, one minute. Question is, has there been a planning commission item that you voted on that then went to council but then had a different outcome at council that you were not pleased with? Please explain.
So, I don't mean to be obtuse, but are you talking about something I voted for in the planning commission that the city council overrode?
Yeah, something that had a different outcome from what the planning commission suggested.
I don't quite remember that. I remember a few things that I voted against that the city council voted for, including the Bergamot Area Plan and the Heinz Project, among others.
Would you want to go into it and explain that?
Pardon me?
Do you want to explain that?
Yeah, I believe that the Heinz Project was too big, had too much commercial, created too many trips. I thought the Bergamot Area Plan had an inadequate IR and shouldn't go forward without a park in all of those acres. So I first voted against the Bergamot Area Plan, and then I voted against the Heinz Project, and then I worked to have the referendum, collect signatures for the referendum for the Heinz Project so that it could be, and it was ultimately reversed.
Cool. Thanks, Anne. Sue. Richard.
There are at least two projects that I found troubling. One was the Heinz Project, where although it was claimed to be transport-oriented development, there were hundreds of thousands of extra square feet of commercial office space and 7,000 extra car trips projected directly opposite a train station. That is not what we mean by transit-oriented development. When we build something like that, we're intending to take cars off the road. Second, it was really appalling piece of architecture. It was like an office development in the Orange County, not somewhere at the leading edge in Santa Monica. I voted against that. The city council moved it on. But the other project that I was pleased to vote against was hundreds of apartments at the corner of Pico and Centinela that were inappropriately 15 feet away from the freeway. And I think it's objectionable when you set up a health-related problem right at the outset of a project and then find that it is moved on and it's acceptable. Ultimately, that was pulled by the developer.
Thanks, Richard and Jennifer.
So, what comes to mind for me is the Heinz Project, which I did not support, and then I helped to actually gather signatures for the referendum. I really felt that the Heinz Project, part of the reason, first of all, it wasn't laid out to be a housing project with ground floor retail. I think the fact that it was not a vertical mixed-use project was a big problem for me, and there wasn't enough affordable housing in the project. And then the other thing that comes to mind specifically is the Bergamot Area Plan. I think the council could have spent a little more time looking at the sidewalk widths throughout the project. I recommended some wider sidewalks in certain areas, and there are a lot of wide sidewalks throughout the plan, but I think a few other high occupancy sidewalks could have used a little more extra attention.
Thank you. The next question is for our other current city officials. After a successful referendum drive to halt the Heinz development earlier this year, do you think this will make developers think twice about coming to build projects in the future? And do you think this is a good thing? Pam, can you answer this one first?
Certainly, developers will think long and hard about coming to Santa Monica, but frankly, they always have. We've always had a high standard for the projects in Santa Monica, whether it's a small project or a larger project. I've heard time after time someone say, "It's so hard to get something approved in Santa Monica, and it's so hard to go through the steps." But yet, people want to be here. So that tells you something. That tells you that the community that we have developed, the community that is here, the community that has the good schools, the community that has the opportunity, work spaces like this where people can have jobs, can have the startups, that that community that we've built, people want. So the fact that it may be difficult and that developers have to work harder, that's okay, because that helps us get the high-quality community that we want and deserve.
Okay, Councilman Kevin McKeown.
All three of our planning commissioners spoke quite correctly about opposing things that were then passed by the city council. Let me clarify, they were passed by a city council majority. And for many years, I have led the minority slow-growth position on our city council. And that's because I believe in our community. I sit here in a place that's full of people who understand Santa Monica is a place of opportunity. And because we're a place of opportunity, we attract all kinds of developers who want to build here. We can choose the best projects, and that, I feel, is where the current city council majority has failed. In approving in particular the Heinz Project, it awakened the community to the fact that things were happening that people who live here really didn't want to see happen to their hometown. I think we cannot ignore that any further. I am opposed to the use of our oceanfront skyline for high-rise condos and hotels, and I've suggested, but been rebuffed by the majority, that that be put to the voters. I think we in Santa Monica need to protect the opportunity we have by being very careful what we choose, and if developers think twice, so should we.
Thanks, Kevin. And finally, Parks and Recreation Commissioner Phil Brock.
You know, if we allow great projects in the city, they'll come. The problem is, the Heinz Project wasn't a great project. It was a great project, as I said before, city council for Des Moines. It was a wonderful project for San Bernardino, but it was a terrible project for our city, and that's why I opposed it. So, if a developer comes to town and they put forward a wonderful proposal that's in keeping with the spirit and authenticity of Santa Monica, they won't have a problem. The problem really is that we're attracting the wrong kind of projects without clear guidelines for developers. We need to have it clear. Here's what we want, here's what we'll accept, and here's what our standards are in the city. There should be no backroom and no side room deals any longer in Santa Monica.
Thanks, Phil. This next question is to Michael, a former council member from 1996 to 2004, and Frank Gruber, former planning commissioner from 1995 to 1999. What do you believe is the biggest issue facing Santa Monica today, and how do you think you can help fix that problem? Michael.
So, I look at planning for climate change as the overall kind of theoretical rubric of which then a lot of other policies go underneath. For me, for example, when we talk about our job-housing balance and the fact that we have a whole lot more office space compared to our housing, well, cutting down the car trips by providing more affordable housing makes sense in its own right, but it's also a way of reducing emissions and helping do our part for climate change. Meeting more local needs locally by having more communities serving retail, making sure our commercial districts mean that you don't have to drive far away, is a way of reducing traffic, but again, it's also a way of reducing emissions. More community gardens, the same sort of thing, improving our public transit. I brought the first motion to our city council to deal with climate change in the spring of 1997. So, for me, a lot of other issues flow into that.
Thanks, Michael. And Frank, the biggest issue facing Santa Monica?
Well, the sad thing is that I agree with Mike a lot about a lot of what he said. I think that the way I would look at it is that we're part of a region. The region has a huge crisis right now in the cost of housing. And interrelated to that is the cost of transportation. We're making a move from a car-based, very expensive transportation system into a less car-based but more expensive housing system. And Santa Monica is kind of at the nexus of that because we had, unfortunately, so much job growth with approving too much office development with no housing development in the 80s. And so we have to deal with that and digest that. At the same time, we also have to provide the parks, et cetera, that we need for a growing population that we're going to have here. And on the long term, a very big issue here is what happens with the airport and turning that into a park.
Thanks, Frank. This next question is for our new political newcomers. As first-time candidates, what is the number-one issue that you are campaigning on to help you win a seat on council? We'll start with you, Zoe. Will you get that microphone? Thanks.
Good evening. Thank you so much for that question. I think we have to reform our system. I think when we have money that is coming from private interests, and especially developers that are funding candidates, you have a system that is not transparent. And then we have a problem, and it's what we see in city council meetings, that our candidates, that we vote to protect the rights of the residents, are protecting the rights of landlords and the rights of developers. So, I've been running with a campaign of taking money out of politics. I've been trying to screen the premiere of Pay to Play in Santa Monica, and I've been finding incredible obstacles because there are forces behind this. They don't want Santa Monicans to understand the issue in detail, from the voices of this incredible piece of education. And it's important that Santa Monicans know that what is at stake here, that we have to have a clean system, a clean political system, to ensure that residents are really heard, and not only the developers and not only the landlords. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick, what issue are you campaigning on as a first-time candidate?
First and foremost, bridging the generational gap in leadership that we see right here in Santa Monica, and making sure that all generations are contributing to keep Santa Monica on the cutting edge and as an innovator, as an incubator for innovation. So that really ties into the cost of living and creating more housing specifically for this new generation, as well as improving our current transportation systems to make them faster, more reliable, to get a lot of people out of cars. On top of that, we also want to start looking at integrating more technology into government through different types of funds, such as GovTech, as well as different policy initiatives. Thank you.
Thanks. And finally, Whitney.
Well, my issue is saving the airport. There's only two candidates, myself and Mr. Leiter over here, and we believe in the airport. That airport's been there since 1917. It's a moneymaker for the city. There's a lot of jobs there. There's a lot of industry there. We lose that airport, that goes away. The president, the president who visited here in this building, landed there with his helicopters. Are we to deny him that? Are we deny the governor to land his jet to see us? Once that airport goes, we'll never get it back. Sure, there's a lot of land there, and if you believe that's going to be a park, we already have two parks there, too. Airport Park and Cloverfield Park, and that's a fact. But I don't see a mile-long park happening, so...
Thanks, Whitney. This isn't a jumping question yet. This is for the first round. Sorry. So this final question to colooned round one is going to be for Jerry, John, and Terrence. Between the three of you, you have run a total of 20 times, going back to 1992. Can you please share why you are so passionate about running nearly every election? We'll start with Jerry, who has run it five times previously since 2002. Jerry.
I think it might have been six times. First, I just want to thank the Santa Monica Mirror and the Chamber and cross-campus for hosting this event. I've been an activist for 35 years. I go to almost all the council meetings, a lot of the commission and board meetings. I think it's a responsibility. Santa Monica is going to be just fine, even if Jerry Rubin doesn't get on the council. But I run, as an activist, to get people motivated, to bring up issues that might not often get brought up, and try and keep it on a real even civil keel, and to talk about the positive things about Santa Monica. Yeah, I run a lot, but I'm, I am serious. It might not be serious defined by the traditional political sense of a campaign, but I am a serious candidate, and I do hope for your vote. Thank you.
John, you've run 12 times previously, dating back to 1992. Can you share why you're so passionate about running nearly every election?
Well, that reminds me of a little limerick that was written. There once was a candidate named Mann, 12 times for council he ran. Virtual Town Hall, Democracy for All, Transparency, Accountability, My Plan. The reason I started running for city council back in 1992 was I was really, really fed up with the way the city's been run, and it's gotten worse over the years. There's a political organization called SMUR, Santa Monica's Runners' Rights, started out, was really a great progressive movement, but what it's turned into is a coalition between Santa Monica's Runners' Rights, the city employees, and developers for affordable housing. That is not what we want in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. For the next round, we will randomly select names from, oh, sorry. How could I forget? Terrence! Jumping ahead on my notes. Terrence, you've run three times previously since 2006. Can you share why you're passionate and why are you running again this year?
Well, in 2006, I was the only candidate that stood for knocking out Prop W, which was to mandate the Oaks Initiative, and I found myself side by side with Ralph Nader, who put the Better Government, the Oaks Initiative, on the ballot in the year 2000, which passed with over 60% of the vote. The Oaks Initiative is for transparency in government. In 2008, I was alongside Bobby Shriver, Bill Rosendahl, Kevin McKeown, and Ted Winter in Prop T, which would have given a moratorium to all development, commercial development, and until we got an idea of being able to resize all of that. When there's an important issue, I feel the need as a resident and as a lifelong resident of Santa Monica to stand up and speak my part. Thank you.
Thanks, Terrence. Okay, for the next round, we are going to randomly select names from a cup. The first five names will answer a question regarding the airport. The next five will answer a question regarding business, and the remaining four will answer a question regarding the Expo Line. Remember, you each have one chance throughout the rest of the night to jump in and answer another question that's not directed to you. So once the people have finished answering the question, you can then jump in by simply raising your mirror. I'll get Carl to pick out the first five names, and this will be the order for answering the question. We have Richard McKinnon, Michael Feinstein, Kevin McKeown, Sue Himmrich, and John Mann. The question is, and it's from Santa Monica Mirror columnist Susan Cloak, who's currently out of state and could not make it tonight, but she asks, "The future of the Santa Monica Airport is an issue where incoming council members will have to show leadership and make decisions. Briefly explain your vision for the future of the airport land." Richard.
When I ran two years ago and looked at the airport, it was clear that on no grounds, economic, social, safety, that it made any sense to keep the airport open long term. And that hasn't changed. What needs to happen is that the airport needs to close in stages as it becomes available under contract between us and the FAA, and that over time, we allow adaptive reuse of buildings. We put some renewable energy sources in there, allow a pad for safety purposes, but basically turn the overall site into a park. Now, it will require a great deal of leadership, political, tactical, to ensure that this happens, but it is only fair to a large section of the residents of this community and to the city as a whole that we move forward with turning it into the park.
Well, the context here is that next year, an agreement the city was forced to enter into many years ago expires, and we get to have control of our own land at the airport. If you look at a satellite photo of Santa Monica Airport, it looks like an aircraft carrier in a sea of homes. Safety and sustainability both argue that we need to at least reduce the operations at that airport and perhaps close it. And we have that opportunity coming up, and you asked what my thoughts are for the future. The future happens one decision at a time, and the next decision confronting our community is what to do at the ballot box on November 4th. There are two competing initiatives. One was put on the ballot by the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association and National Aircraft Interests. It would freeze the airport exactly as it is in perpetuity. We couldn't even change from letted gas to unleaded gas. The other measure on the ballot is ours. It was put on by the city council to counter that first measure. It's Measure LC. Measure LC will give us control over what happens with the future of the airport. So if you want to know about the future of the airport, vote yes on LC and no on Measure D. I'll take the chance to say it again. Yes on LC and no on D.
All right, moving on. Sue.
Typical confusion from the opponents who are trying to buy the election.
Let me repeat that. Yes on LC, local control. No on D for deception. And let me just say that three months ago, I went to a meeting that was put on by the supporters of Measure D because I wanted to hear what they had to say, and within the first five minutes of that meeting, I decided I was yes on LC, no on D. Because if you've ever heard the expression, "When their lips were moving, they were lying", that was what was happening. So, I walk, I've been walking Sunset Park the past few days. The jets are deafening. But what bothers me more is sustainability and the health issues. There have been studies out of UCLA showing that ultrafine particulates are extending three football fields into, and more football fields into our residential neighborhoods. That simply is not acceptable for a city that purports to care about its residents as we do.
If you could pass it to your right to John.
John, what? What's wrong?
Yeah, we'll use this one. I was told to use this mic.
I didn't spit on it, John.
No, no, I was told to use this mic. Actually, I want to turn the airport into a spaceport. No, really, I was the first candidate to come out years and years ago to talk about closing the airport and turning it into a park. When I first was speaking against the airport, the people up here, some of them will remember, treated me with derision, and I've gotten that a lot. I'm ahead of my time with these ideas. Now, everybody's jumping on board, except for two other candidates, and they want to close the airport. That airport was purchased, that land was purchased with bond money in the 20s by the citizens of this city for a park. Not for an airport, but it was used in World War II by McDonnell Douglas, and it's in a park now, but we can take it back. It's our land.
And finally, Michael, the future of the airport.
So, my vision, like many's here, is for it to become an incredible park on public land that we own. I see a place for some cutting-edge solar technology to generate solar power. Earlier, I was talking about climate change as a way of thinking. I see an underground cistern for water storage, again, dealing with drought and future generations. And then on the southwest corner, where we have Santa Monica College, we have the Ruskin Theater, and I think we should keep the Barker Hangar. I can see a little mini cultural campus there. It is land that we own, and in 1997, when Pam and I were in the council and we did the first open space element update since 1974, that identified that we're a couple hundred acres short of open space in this city. We're one of the densest coastal cities in California, and to make this more livable, we should have a couple hundred acres more of open space. Since it's land we own, it's a perfect nexus.
Thanks, Michael. Does any candidate want to jump in and answer this question regarding the airport? All right, hanging on to it for a bit later on. Yes? Hang on, let's give you the microphone.
We've got to save the airport. That's 227 acres of prime land. Now, if you think you're going to build a park there, here in Pinocchio Land, I'm sorry. You know, if they rezone that, that means that they can put in buildings, 20 stories. We lose a bubble. There's a 3.9 bubble in every direction, and if you look at the jets that land in LAX that are coming from the north, they come down, they come around our city at 7,500 feet, and they come around, and they come down to land at LAX. There's a lot of, that's another story, too. There's a lot of like, all kinds of fluorocarbons and things and, you know, stuff coming out of LAX. Why don't they do a study on that? You know, and it's 10 times, 20 times what we could put out. Anyway, I digress. Anyway, if we lose that bubble, then airlines themselves can come down to at least 4,000, maybe 3,500 feet, because all the airlines will save fuel to come in. And if you think jets are bad now, just wait till that bubble goes away.
Terrence, you want to jump in on this?
If you look at, that's 227 acres. The RDA money was lifted from our city by Jerry Brown for fiscal responsibility. The idea that Tongva Park cost us $100 million for roughly eight acres. The idea that 227 acres, if they're talking about making it a park, if you do the math, I don't think the money exists to be able to do that without developing. In 2012, I said, "If it's going to be waterfalls, forest, area, and all that, I'm in for it", and nobody would sign on with me to say that that's what it was all about. That land will be developed. It's an eight-square-mile restricted airspace over our city because of the airport. That will disappear. All the height limits for the buildings, from west LA to the beach, will also disappear. So I think the argument is very strong.
Thanks, Terrence. Does anyone else want to answer the airport question? Remember, you only get one chance to jump in. No, you get one shot to jump in and another. So it's a surprise what's coming up. All right, we're going to move on to the next question, which is the business. While Carl draws out the names, I just want to alert the audience that we are doing a hashtag SM Votes, so if you do have Twitter, feel free to post, and it will appear on the rotating screens. All right, for the next question, the people who will be answering it will be Terrence Leiter, Frank Gruber, Jerry Rubin, Phil Brock, and finally, Nick Bowles. The question is, "The Santa Monica Chamber of Commerce says business owners often express concern over regulations and costs locating in Santa Monica. What can be done to address this?" We'll start with you, Terrence.
You know, I'm a lifelong resident. I've seen a lot of beautiful family businesses being driven out of the city because of the costs. I think it's really important that the city set aside some sort of regulations, much like they have the rent control for apartment dwellers, to be able to have these lifelong restaurants and other businesses stay healthy in our city. The idea that the city only makes money on new businesses coming in, and as soon as the business is closed, it's a matter of what we call churning. They are hoping that that thing doesn't take flight so they can, you know, resell the land, much like they've done with Heinz. much like they've done with Heinz. The Heinz project closed, but the next developer is in place and the envelopes are ready to be passed around to the city council again and other, you know, guys that are working with the city. So, you know, we've got to stop this whole idea of selling our future here. We're maxed out. Our square footage is absolutely maxed.
Thanks, Terrence. Frank, business regulations in Santa Monica?
Well, I am a small business person in Santa Monica. I have a law office in the Central Tower Building, in 1929 building, that was just regulated because it was turned into a landmark. And I think that the owners of the building had a good relationship with the Landmarks Commission as they went through that process. Look, anybody who's ever tried to add an addition to his or her house in Santa Monica knows that there's a lot of regulations that goes with the territory. Anybody who has a business who's tried to put a little sign out on Main Street, say, to try to get people in, knows there's a lot of regulation. And we have to work to streamline that. The city a few years ago had a study about that kind of regulation. And I don't think the stuff was implemented as well as it should be. However, we should recognize it. I'm going to pick up on something that Pam said earlier. All of that planning, all of that regulation has created a city that people want to have their businesses in. And that's the best thing, I think, that you can do for a business is to create an environment where people want to work.
Thanks, Frank. Jerry Brubin.
Well, it's okay to stand up. My back's hurting a little. Well, first of all, a couple of things. I still remember, I thought it was really strange when the, what was now One West Bank, that was formerly First Federal Bank, they wouldn't allow them to change the name of their sign at the top of the building at Fourth and Wilshire. Luckily, on appeal, it was overturned. But it was such a bureaucratic thing that was so strange to be so tough on that simple sign ordinance. I thought that was not good for the business community. I do want to say I think we have a good process. I support the development agreement process. And even when you talk about the Heinz agreement, that was a six, seven-year process that included the developer, city staff, hundreds and hundreds of people from all points of view coming together for dozens of town hall meetings. I thought it was a very democratic process, and the project did get better.
Phil Brock?
I'll first answer, Jerry. The Heinz process was a horrible process for the Heinz company and for our residents. We need regulations that are clear-cut, that are simple, without the development agreement process. If I was Heinz, I would have been in tears at the end of the process. But they were allowed by a city council and planning department to bring a project that wasn't wanted or needed in Santa Monica. Now, business regulations. I talked to a restaurateur about two weeks ago at Jocelyn Dog Park. He's been trying for 18 months to open a small restaurant in Pico Boulevard, 18 months. And he's hiring an expediter at $10,000 a month to get him through Santa Monica business regulations? That's absolutely absurd. Absolutely absurd. It should be simple. The reason we have city staff is to get those people who want to open a business through the process. They should never have to hire someone else. We need to simplify our business process, reduce our fees, and make it a great city for small businesses to flourish in Santa Monica. Let's incubate those businesses.
Thanks, Phil. And finally, Nick Bowles, business regulation in Santa Monica?
Well, first and foremost, local businesses strengthen the local economy more than anything else. And really taking a look at the current permitting process to make an even playing field for different types of business, especially small businesses trying to enter in to make sure that they can navigate the complex fields, is extremely important. One specific thing that a business owner was having gripes about was the very tight inspection time windows for when they would call inspectors. So I believe it was around 30 minutes, which leaves them a very, very short amount of time to do an accurate and in-depth check so that they don't have to keep rescheduling inspectors over and over again, and then getting an overturn of them, which can create to those 18-month-long periods before they can actually open up their doors. So really looking at giving small businesses the tools to be able to compete on an even playing field with the larger corporations to ensure that we keep our money here in the local economy. Thank you.
All right, if you have not, we... That's Pam. Thanks. Go for it.
Yes? Okay, so I want to bring up a positive example, carrying forward the climate change perspective again. And I think there's something that Pam and Kevin and I voted on is that we looked at strengthening our green building guidelines in Santa Monica to go over and above Title 24 in the late 90s to promote greater energy efficiency. And we work with the local architect and developer community to look at what the payback times would be in relationship to the standards that we came up. And rather than just picking a standard out of nowhere, we set some goals, we set some timelines where people would make back the money so that an ecological investment would be an economical investment. And that means that both it was profitable for local businesses and they are better situated to compete in the global economy because their businesses and their buildings have had to be ready for climate change as it happens to us.
Thanks, Michael. Does anyone want to jump in and answer the business question? Jennifer?
So my take on the business regulations here in Santa Monica is that it's very important for those regulations to be in place because it ensures that the business is going to thrive and be, you know, and also be a very good neighbor. Lots of places in Santa Monica have residential neighborhoods, and we now have a lot of businesses in our residential neighborhoods. And so it's really important that the restrictions and regulations ensure that the businesses are going to operate in a sustainable way, that it regulates the traffic and the amount of people that drive here, drive to the place of employment, and also consumption of resources, for example. But Cross Campus is a really good example of a transfer of use, you know, office to office, where you can have this kind of creative space. And on Montana, there are good examples of regulations being relaxed for restaurants, for example, to have seating on the sidewalk. So Santa Monica is very business-friendly. Santa Monica is very supportive of small businesses. And I look forward to doing more to support small businesses.
Thanks. Zoe?
I remember when Cross Campus opened in front of 829 Broadway. And it's incredible the growth that they can and they have achieved in such a short period of time. So either they're doing something right that nobody else knows, or they're doing something right. So the level of regulations is debatable when it comes to someone that has a vision for the city, that knows how to work with the city, and that does something to increase the business and increase the participation of the millennials. I think Cross Campus is a perfect example of a business that is millennial-savvy and that is using the resources of Silicon Beach and the resources of the new growth of this demographic in the city. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other takers for the business question? Remember, you only get one chance for the whole evening, so use it wisely. Anyone want to answer this one? Pam? Wildcard, thanks.
One of the things I wanted to mention is that Santa Monica, for two years in a row, has been a finalist as one of the most business-friendly cities in Los Angeles County. And this is determined by the Los Angeles County Economic Development Corporation. They're the folks who do demographics, who do forecasts on the countywide business climate. So again, we've had that recognition. The city has an ombudsman. That's a person who will help a business, walk them through, what are the kinds of regulations for that type of business, to help them know what that path forward is. It may be a complicated path forward, but again, knowledge is power. So understanding what those steps are, being there as a point person as the business is going through the regulatory steps so that they can have a streamlined process. And then lastly, one of the things to, making sure that we give our small businesses a chance. I've been a proponent of making sure that our small businesses have the opportunity to do marketing, to be able to put signs up, to be able to display their wares, especially on Main Street. Giving them the opportunity they don't have of marketing budgets like the big companies.
Thanks, Pam. Anyone else wants to use their one wildcard of the night? All right, we're going to ask the last question in round one regarding the Expo line. This is to the four candidates, Pam, Jennifer, Kevin, and Zoe. "Do you think the city is equipped to handle the arrival of the Expo line in terms of congestion as it cuts through several major north-south intersections like that of Colorado and Lincoln, which is just around the corner? What are your ideas to prevent gridlock when it begins service?" Pam, we'll start with you.
Well, first of all, when it begins, there will always be a little period of people getting used to it. But think about it, the intersections are crossing. It's no different than a car going through an intersection, a car stopping at a red light. Because when the train is going through Santa Monica, it will be in what's called street-running mode. So we'll operate like any other vehicle on the street. So yes, trains will be coming through, but it would be like another car coming through. People, though, will be having to get used to, as they have had during construction, new paths of travel, where the intersections are, where the gates are, et cetera. But remember, the cycle is such. If you go to downtown LA, if you look at the Blue Line, if you Expo Line, you will see it in street-running mode. You will see that it operates just like another vehicle.
Thanks, Pam. Jennifer?
When the Expo is ready to start running and they do their testing, it's really important for the council, for police, our fire department, and Expo to all be working collaboratively during that testing phase so that everything can run smoothly. During that time, regardless of however many months it takes, we'll find out more about the traffic patterns that emerge as a result of the rail coming through in its real-world testing phase. I think that the Big Blue Bus is currently stepping up to the plate and working on reorganizing their routes and schedules to help bring residents throughout town. And they could do some more to help bring residents north and through, the north and south parts of the town. I support a smaller circulator that would help get residents throughout town. And again, the Big Blue Bus reorganizing its schedule is going to play a big part of that. And I hope that they are also part of this testing phase.
Thanks, Jennifer. You pass that to Kevin.
Anytime you make a major change in mobility, even if it's going to be good in the long run, there will be glitches, there will be negative effects. And I've been in ongoing conversation with our traffic engineers and with the staff who are negotiating with Metro to make sure that we minimize those impacts. And in fact, I think we can. I've been especially concerned about the area around Fourth and Fifth Street. And that'll probably be the area where we have the biggest problem. But again, we have the benefit of having the terminus of a regional light rail line coming into our downtown. Now, if a motorist is delayed at an intersection for 30 seconds, that is undoubtedly an inconvenience. But if a fire truck with paramedics on board on the way to a heart attack is delayed for 30 seconds, that's a disaster. So that's the part I'm really looking at. And at our mid-year budget session, we're looking at some redeployment of fire. I'll be supporting the addition of firefighters to our budget to make sure they can get to your home in time if you need them.
Thanks, Kevin. Then finally, Zoe.
Thank you for that question. I think there are issues of congestion, and there are also social issues that come with the increase of people visiting our city. But let's address first the congestion issues. I've been advocating for safer bicycle lanes because a lot of people don't feel safe using bicycles. And also, I've been advocating for insurance in case of accidents. When the cyclist feels safe to use the bicycles because they're going to be taken care of if there is, God forbid, an accident, we're going to have an increase of people using bicycles and not using cars. That's one of the solutions that I would like to be working with the city. Also, working in a partnership with the private sector to give gifts or awards to those who use bicycles and help us ease the density in the parking issues and the density in general that we have in the city. And working with the police department is great that we have Alvin Egas and Jacqueline Seabrooks that understand ethnic diversity and the demographics that we're going to be receiving in the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Of any of the eight candidates who have not jumped in on a question, would you like to use your chance now? Remember, we have two more rounds after this. Frank? So people get one wildcard per three rounds? Yeah, so we've got two more rounds.
Well, the interesting thing about the Expo to me is that it was so popular when people were talking about it. It was the most, kind of one of the most popular things ever in Santa Monica politics. And as it's coming towards opening, you're hearing a lot of fear about it. And I think that that's kind of natural. People get fearful about stuff. But it's not like we have to invent the wheel here. I take the Expo periodically down to meet my wife at USC, and I get off at the Vermont Avenue exit. And Vermont's a big street, and it's at street level, and traffic's not backed up crazy. All of these things in terms of timing, the passage, and stopping the train so that fire trucks and ambulances can go north can be handled with transponders that we already have in most of our intersections in Santa Monica. And we just need to bring that technology into play. So it's all very doable. And I urge people, don't be fearful about this change that's going to happen. It's going to be fantastic for Santa Monica.
Thanks, Frank. Any other candidate? Jerry?
Thanks again. I did want to weigh in on this because I never had a car in my life. I take the Blue Bus. I'm so looking forward to the light rail coming here in 2016. And I agree with Frank Gruber. I think our fears will be completely outweighed by all the positive benefits that the light rail's going to bring to Santa Monica. I also want to thank Mayor O'Connor for helping to get the light rail here for her service on the metro board. You could put bikes on the light rail. It's going to be wonderful. I hope we can get other... I'm all for the bullet train, too. And I'd love to see in my lifetime a subway coming all the way down to the sea as well. And I'd be willing to pay the first fare for anyone that... Just to get them out of their car and get them either on the Blue Bus or on the light rail. So if anyone's listening and you haven't written, hold me to my promise, I'll pay your first fare.
Phil?
Well, I want to answer a couple of things. First of all, I think we, I'm happy the Expo line's coming, but I'm very distressed at the way it's coming. My understanding is that Metro originally wanted to put it down Olympic Boulevard in the center median and then bring it down to Earth around Fifth Street, thereby not creating a traffic hazard, not stopping traffic, and not encouraging, not encour... See, my microphone is cut off. There we go. And not encouraging more development on Colorado. So just to let you know, on the Blue Line, over 100 motorists and pedestrians have been killed at Blue Line-level crossings since 1990. There have been over 800 collisions on the Blue Line. At least five each year since 1990 have involved the police department. So we're creating issues where we shouldn't have created issues. We have no parking for our Expo line. The Expo line's on a surface street when it shouldn't be on a surface street. And we have no way to move around the city to get to the Expo line. Thank you. And I got a double buzzer, and I appreciate that.
Thanks, Phil. Thanks, Phil. Terrence, you've already jumped in, so you can only have one for the night. We still have two more rounds, so you don't have to use that yet. Up to you? No? All right. For the next round, we're going to break it up a little bit and have a lightning round. Each candidate is going to have 30 seconds to answer. I've drawn the names just so we can speed things up. The question is, "Development continues to be among the top issues this election. On a scale of 1 to 10, where 1 represents extremely pro-development and 10 represents extremely anti-development, what score would you rate yourself and briefly explain your reasoning in 30 seconds or less?" We're going to start with Nick Bowles.
Okay, so I'll go with a 7, because I believe development is meant to help us and not to hurt us. And when I think development, I think development is solving the current problems that we're having. Development that is intended to help balance this jobs-to-housing imbalance that we're looking at by creating more residential units, alleviating traffic congestion, as well as developing the transportation routes, so that we can have easy and fast access to it and remove ourselves from our automobiles and free up space to our throughways and parking spaces.
Phil Brock, where 1 is extremely pro, 10 is anti-development.
I'd say a 5, because I love new, sustainable, smart development that emphasizes adaptive reuse in Santa Monica. We have 3 million square feet of office space downtown. We can adapt it, we can reuse it. You're seeing an example of an adaptive reuse right now. Nobody can be anti-change. Nobody can be anti-development, because we all change every day in life. I've lost probably more hair just since I've been here tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Next one, we have Michael Feinstein.
I mean, look, 10 for bad development and 1 for good development. So it just gets down to, you know, what you try and push for. When I was an activist in the early 90s and our council approved what I thought was a bad development, the Civic Center specific plan, I helped lead a referendum against it. And today, we have Tonga Park there instead of 80-foot office building. So I've walked the talk.
Jerry Rubin?
1 is...
1 is pro, 10 is anti-development.
10 is anti-development, and 1 is...
That's correct.
Okay, I'd say 0 then. Seriously. I just think it's just not fair to give development a bad name or say that developers are bad people. We need it. Schools are developed. Hospitals are developed. Housing is developed, low income. Art galleries are developed. The house people are living in is developed. So I'm for development.
Thanks, Jerry. So this is a reminder of, so 1 is pro, 10 is anti-development. So the higher, you're against development. Next one, go Pam O'Connor.
I'm 5. I'm in the middle. And I want to talk about, and I'd like folks to say, what development has been built in the last six years? Commercial development. There's been the Agensys Project, that's a biotech firm. Projects have included the Pico Library, the Santa Monica, St. Monica's Community Center, affordable housing units, and residential housing in downtown Santa Monica. There has not been that much commercial development built in the last six years. Modest development, development that serves our community, is important and helps us. The housing that we've included helps to host the people who are here, who are working in places like where we are, Cross Campus.
Thanks, Pam. Next, we're going to go Sue.
Well, I am a 1 on adaptive reuse, a 10 on new office space, and a 5 on new residential space. I think we should always look at adaptive reuse first. I think we don't need another square foot of office space in Santa Monica, and I think we need to build housing, but only if it's a great project to correct our jobs-housing imbalance.
You can pass that to John. Nope, he doesn't want to use that one.
I'm a 10. I'm an extremist on this issue. If you've noticed, since the last election, these buildings that have been springing up all over town, I would like to see, I mean, it's very badly timed. You've got the Expo line coming in, we're going to be doing the California Incline, you've got all these other things, projects, going on, and then at the same time, all these development agreements. I want a complete moratorium on all development, and I want the residents to decide for any future.
Thanks. We're going to go to Frank Gruber. 1 pro, 10 anti. Whereabouts do you stand?
Well, Mike took my thing of 1 for good development and 10 for bad development. But whether development is good or bad has to do a lot with place and history. Santa Monica increased its jobs from 1980 to 2000, from 52,000 to 74,000, with an explosion of office development and virtually no housing that was built. And that's caused a lot of our problems here. When I first got involved in politics 20 years ago, it was to say we should not build more of these office parks, but I do think there's a place for good development.
Terrence Leiter?
8.75 on that, as far as the footprint that's... Okay. The, as far as, can I get my time back?
Sure.
What we don't need is more footprint or height. We, idea that we also need to be very careful about the toxic dust cloud that the Metro had created. This, in 2014, no, I'm sorry, 2010, we stopped our agreement with Arizona. The idea that what we dug up out here, we couldn't dump in California. It had to be shipped to Arizona to dump it. All the meanwhile...
Thanks, Terrence. We're going to go with Zoe. 1 is pro, 10 is anti-development.
I want 1 for green, sustainable environmental development, but really, I'm in 5, because we have to have balance, and I'm a fan of balance. And I'm very surprised at the change of heart of Mr. Phil Brock, because he's been anti-development, but I learned yesterday that he's receiving money from industry, a big real estate company, and that's why he has changed his heart. He is, actually, they're my real estate broker, and I was finding that...
So if we can talk about your answer. Thanks, we'll move on. Next one, we go to Kevin McKeown.
On your scale of 1 to 10, I'm Kevin, I'm a 7. And I say I'm a 7 because I know how to say no, and the current council majority doesn't. We have incumbents who have voted for every single development agreement since the loose was passed. I think that's wrong. I think we need to be much more thoughtful about projects and about the cumulative impact on quality of life of accepting all these projects. There are great projects we should accept. There are other projects to which we should say no.
Can you pass that to Richard?
We're trying to build a livable city here that's in scale to human beings, and that makes me an 8 or 9, given most of the projects that I've seen. And a line of tall hotels down Ocean Avenue is not what we want. Hundreds of small apartments jammed into buildings that are like a sack of potato on a site, not what we want. And we rarely see a project that makes everybody go, "This is a great addition to the city." That's where the skepticism comes in.
Whitney?
Number 6 for me. And I've got to tell you, development should be in the hands of the people and not in the city councils. You guys remember Tommy's, don't you? Tommy's, great place, great chili dogs. Now it's a Starbucks. I can make my own coffee at home. I can go to any place and get a cup of coffee, but I can't get a chili dog in this town anymore. You know? Well, you know, we also need an ice rink on Fifth and Broadway, and a permanent ice rink enclosed, and if they want to build apartments or buildings on, fine by me. And also, we need a crosswalk across from the Ken Edwards Center to the mall.